I'd like to call and order the Wilson County Commission meeting of June 17th, 2024. Welcome all of our guests here tonight and appreciate you being here and entertain anytime you have an opportunity to come back to be with us. At this time, I'll introduce Commissioner Lauren Breeze for the prayer and the pledge.
I'd like to invite my friend John Woodruff up here to lead us in prayer and pledge. Those who don't know, John, actually, he's a minister with the Assemblies of God, and his pastoral journey has taken him through 20 years of working with at Rusk Youth, which led him finally to Wilson County where he is now the Executive Director of the Bridge House. Which, if you're not familiar, and I wrote the mission down, so excuse me from reading it from a piece of paper, but their mission is to lead youth out of homelessness and empower them to live a life that will change a life. They do this in three different ways. They provide housing support for children in DCS custody, support individuals who are aging out of foster care, and provide wraparound support for foster, adoptive, and biological families. So I want to thank him for everything he, his family, and the Bridge House does for Wilson County and our youth. Thank you for-
Please rise.
Let's pray. Lord, I just want to thank you, Father, for just, first off, for just being able to come from New York and be able to be here in this city, Lord. To be here and to just see what you have been doing in this city is truly inspiring, Lord. Just the people that are here, God, the leaders that are here, the amount of investment that has taken place for many years that have fruit that's been sown, seeds that's been sown, Father, to produce the fruit that we're now seeing. And Lord, I just pray, Father, over the, all the leaders in this room, Lord, all the families of the leaders, Lord, that you just continue to give us wisdom. You continue to give us just the wisdom, Lord, that gives us the ability to create health in the midst of, in things that can be very difficult, Lord. I pray for unity, Lord, above all things, Lord, and that we would be able to expedite progress in such massive ways where other counties would look in and wonder, man, how is the City of Lebanon doing this? How is Wilson County doing the things that they're doing, God? And we give you all the glory, in Jesus' name. Amen. Let's say the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. If you will press yes on your panel, record your presence at tonight's meeting. Twenty-four present, one absent. This time, we'd have public comment period for anyone wishing to speak before any issue that's coming before the County Commission meeting tonight. I do have a list of people that have signed in and will go in that order. At this time, I'll ask the Honorable Judge Kane to come forward.
Good evening. As the first matter is, I like to say, "Go Vols." Been a good week for us. I wish to speak to you all first about the potential Criminal Justice Center that's been talked about and bid on and everything else on this. I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak to you, first of all. There's been, I guess, talk about whether there's a need for this building or not. I would submit that there is a need that exists right now for this building, and that need's only going to continue to grow as our population continues to skyrocket. There's been talk about the cost being substantial, and it is, but the cost is only going to increase as the years go on. I would point, there was some information provided about some other counties' justice centers. If you'll look at the Rutherford County Justice Center from 2016, they were $360 a square foot. Sumner was just finished theirs, was bid out in 2021, was $395 a square foot. Sevier County and Murray County from last year, one was $567 a square foot and one was $618. It's my understanding that our, that the plan that the Commission is to consider is 467 per square foot. So it's in the mid-range, and based on those numbers would appear to be a good value. I mean, I know it's hard to value when you have something so significant as far as the cost. But obviously, multiple meetings have been held, time has been expended, money has been expended to try to get you as a body, the best picture you can get as to whether or not to proceed with this project or not. I will submit to you, a need exists now. I don't have a designated courtroom. Folks, I'm the Criminal Court Judge for this county, have 3,600 cases in Wilson County per year, and I share my courtroom with Judge Collins, so I have access to this justice center six months a year. Now, admittedly, I have other counties that I go and call on, but that is a great issue for me. If I'm trying to set a trial or different matters that occur on months that Judge Collins has a courtroom, I'm either unable to hold court in that courtroom or have to work something out with him and see if he's, if the courtroom's available. That's a problem that exists now, folks, and it's only going to increase. There have been judges added in our neighboring judicial districts just within the last two, three years, Sumner County, Putnam County, Robertson and Montgomery County, Williamson County, and I suspect, based on our rapid growth, that that's what will happen in this district in the fairly near future, and we don't have a place to put that judge. Now, right now, that's not a problem. We don't have that additional judge. But I believe it's coming, and I know the growth is coming, and I know that there's a need that's there, that while we can continue to exist under the current situation, there's going to be a point when we, when I don't believe that we're going to be able to do so effectively. When that's going to be, I don't know. But I submit that I believe the approval of this project would be a proactive step by the part of this Commission. I'd submit there are some issues we have, other than the lack of courtroom space, we have a lot of parking issues. I know that the Commission's been very concerned about that. It's come up at the prior meetings. Parking has been an issue, will be an issue, and I'm hopeful that should this, should the Commission approve this program, that's something that can help be alleviated at least at some point. I know there has been some concern from this body to that regard, but, you know, I think even if we start this project now, we're probably looking, I'm not a construction expert, but we're talking a year and a half, two years, probably before it's completed. If we kick it down the road, however many years we kick it down the road, we're just pushing it back and pushing it back, and the problem's just going to become more and more urgent. So, you know, I appreciate your responsibility. You have the purse for our tax dollars, and I'm as cheap as anybody, so I can understand some concerns, reluctance, y'all want to get as much information as you can about this project, and I'm not sitting in your seat. It's not my decision to make, but I felt like I'd at least get up here and try to educate the best I could, the Commission, about the problems that we're having and what I hope this proposal would attempt to solve. So, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Judge. And I did set the timer, and I set it a little bit late since it's got one minute up, but we do try to limit to three minutes, so thank you, we're within that time limit. This time, Mr. Robert Lanham, Sr.
Greetings, Mayor and County Commissioners. My name is Robert Lanham, and I live out on Beach Log Road at 4137. And I came to speak on the proposal about the property tax versus the wheel tax. My message is really short. I've talked to a lot of different people, especially out in the rural areas, and almost as I fail, they are for the wheel tax as opposed to property tax increase. I just wanted to share that news with you guys, so that's all I've got to say. Thank you very much.
Sir. Thank you, sir. Judge Clara Byrd.
Good evening to all of you. Those who don't know me, I'm Clara Byrd, and I've been your Circuit Judge for 26 years. In fact, the first seven years of my term were right here in this courtroom, and I've missed it ever since. I really want it back. You can't, just kidding. But we're at the church, the College Street area, and courts have been divided there for years. We've got two General Sessions Courts. Courtroom is one, it's on College Street, one's at the Criminal Justice Center, and then the same way with the Circuit, they're split up. Criminal is split up, and we have a clerk that has to go from one courthouse to the other, and staff are constantly going back and forth. I will have to say this for our county employees. If it weren't for the protection that's been provided us over these years, I wouldn't be a judge, because my deputies have been excellent, and I know this Commission has been wonderful. You've given us what we needed, and we appreciate it, but I know they deserve a raise. I can't say how to vote. All I can tell is educate you. I'm here just to educate you. For those of you who don't know, what I do as Circuit Judge, I do have to travel. I have five counties, but more than 80% of my time is spent here in Wilson County because of the demand here. I hear family law cases, so that involves adoptions. I hear child custody cases, and I better apologize because some of you, I may have ruled against one of your kids or your mom or your daddy. I might have even had your mom and daddy's case in my court. And 50% of the people that leave family court are not happy, and sometimes 100% aren't happy. So it's, there's no good decision, and I know what it feels like for you tonight to make a decision, because I have to make those tough calls every day. But we are at a point where our College Street facility has outlived its purpose. It's like an old pair of shoes to me. I hate to get rid of it, but I can't find a cobbler anymore. Nobody can fix the leather on my shoes, and I come in and, Judge Kane, right now, he has no air conditioning in his courtroom. Judge Collins, his room, he didn't have air conditioning the other day. We've been told it could take eight, 10 weeks before we can get a part, and they may have to manufacture it. I know last year I had a problem with my air conditioning in my courtroom, and they had to manufacture a part because they're just not available, and unfortunately, technology is so advanced, we can't get parts. It's sort of like back in the day when you bought a TV, that was considered a major purpose. You know, that was a major purchase. Now, they're disposable, because you have them three years and they're no good. We have the same problems with our equipment. But I just want to say, I do realize your priority is the children. I've looked at the budget, and you spend 65% of your revenue on children, on education alone, and that's where my priority is. That's the main thing I hear, is about our children, and I want to keep them safe and provide for their health and their welfare, and they actually come to court. Don't think these courtrooms are sitting here and, we don't have children. We do, and I want them to be safe for them and want it to function, and I have jurors from all parts of the county. Just had one last week, excuse me, my throat gets dry, and they were, most of them were from the Mount Juliet area, but we have to keep them comfortable. We've got to have air conditioning. We can't have ceiling stripping, and the surrounding counties have managed to build new complexes. You can look at Putnam County's complex, although there's been a while, and Rutherford, but now Sumner has a new one. Our children, they deserve a legacy, and I just want you to remember, I'm just here, can't tell you how to vote, but I do know these employees, they're wonderful. I don't know what I'd do without them, and I don't know what you'd do without them. They provide for you. And Mayor, I have to say, thank you. You've kept us advised. I've read these emails. I've been involved in the process for six years. This isn't a fly-by-night decision, because we've been planning, meeting with architects for six years, and I don't see the clock, but I've probably run over. I'm not used to a clock, so I apologize, but thank you for your consideration, and thank you for all you do for us.
Thank you, Judge. Mr. Jeff Cherry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening. Good evening, members of the Commission. My name is Jeff Cherry. I want to give a little different perspective from a lawyer practicing here in Wilson County. I've practiced law here for 22 years, and I have the benefit of being in both of these buildings in front of these different judges. One of the things I would ask for you all to consider, from a lawyer's perspective and from litigants' perspectives, we do not currently have adequate space. We have an inadequate spacing problem. That pertains, there are some days in Judge Lee, who's present in his General Sessions courtroom, we cannot get the defendants on the docket in the door, and they stand out in the hall until we can move them in. We certainly can't get any victims or any witnesses there. We have a problem with being able to keep the victims separate from the witnesses and from the litigants from safety perspectives in that regard. I do commend our sheriff and the Sheriff's Department for an excellent job of security working with what they have, but it needs to be much better for the victims involved, the witnesses involved, the persons that are coming to court to give testimony, as well as the staff that work for the judges and the clerks. I was just in the Sumner County new facility today, and the space is incredibly adequate for what is needed in that regard, and I submit that we have those issues as well. If a lawyer is handling a practice of criminal and civil both, there are many days where the judges will have to wait on that lawyer to leave the College Street Building to get over to where the Criminal Court Building is located when court is being held there, and vice versa. And so we have issues of folks and staff continuing to have to travel between those places. Parking, of course, is a concern and continues to be a concern. I know Judge Kane addressed that, but with parking, with these other issues can also become some security concerns, particularly when you have the employees that are having to leave and go out into the same parking lot where the litigants are going and walking out with them. Our current legislative trend is trending toward more and more statutory offenses and more and more severe punishment, which is leading to more arrests and more persons having to attend court. I agree with Judge Kane. I don't know when it will come, but I'm convinced with this trend in the legislature, we're going to see a new judgeship requirement here. We're going to have to have room for the staff for that court to be able to function. And so respectfully, I believe, on behalf of many of the lawyers that practice in these courts and many of the litigants and witnesses appearing, that the need is present and available now. It's only going to increase as time goes on. I thank you for what you do. My time is up. We appreciate you.
Thank you, Mr. Cherry. I have nobody, no one else that's signed up, and so at this time, unless someone else steps forward, we will close the public comment period, and we will move forward. Thank you for being here and hearing our voice. Report from the Steering Committee, Commissioner Fields.
Yes, the Steering Committee met in regular session on Thursday, June 6th, in the upstairs conference room. A copy of those minutes are in your pocket. I move that they be received and filed.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Adoption of the agenda, Commissioner Fields.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have an agenda, but I think there are Commissioner Breeze and Commissioner Franklin would like to address the agenda before we vote on it.
Okay. Commissioner Breeze.
Yes, Mayor, I would like to amend the agenda and move Resolution 24-6-5, the request that all public safety telecommunicators be elevated to first responder, up to the front of the agenda underneath the special recognition section, even though it's not an honorary resolution, and it does carry the full weight of this County Commission.
Okay. The takeout amendment, and then Commissioner Franklin.
I'd like to move, reorder 24-6-8, 24-6.7, and 24.6.6. That puts the bid vote ahead of borrowing the money vote.
It's in order, okay. I got two amendments there. Commissioner Gentry.
I'd like to, on the elections and appointments in the judicial commissioner area, I'd like to make a motion, we add two full-time positions there in addition to the part-time, and add one promotion within the office also. So that'd be three other activities in addition to the part-time.
So we got three amendments there, so those are three motions. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of the amended agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Now to adopt the agenda?
I would make a motion to adopt the amended agenda as presented.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Consent agenda now, we have Commissioner Fields.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we do have a consent agenda. It is a line item transfer, 24 days, six days, one within the Sheriff's Department. I move that it be approved.
Second.
I got a motion and a second. Are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. All hearts and minds good with your vote. Please record.
24 yes, one absent.
Resolution passes. Thank you for that. Special recognition at this time, Commissioner Lauren Breeze.
Now we have several dispatchers in the audience. You would please come up to the podium. So as they walk up here, let me give you some history here. I had someone approach me in February and let me know that our dispatchers, so 911, WEMA, and the Sheriff's Department are not officially classed as first responders, which was shocking to me, but it's become a national movement. So the National Labor's and Standards Board actually classifies these people, who are really your first first responders at the moment, as secretarial staff, which I'm sure you agree with me that that's not the case. So I went first to the 911 board, and then we worked this through the Law Enforcement Committee and Emergency Management, who all voted unanimously, that this evening, we would like to recognize these individuals officially as first responders here in Wilson County. So, well, thank you. All right. Resolution of the Board of County Commissioners of Wilson County, Tennessee, requesting that all public safety telecommunicators in Wilson County, including Wilson County 911, Wilson County Sheriff's Department dispatchers, and Wilson County Emergency Management dispatchers be elevated to the status of first responders. Whereas public safety telecommunications officers are part of the critical infrastructure of the public safety system and play a critical role in public safety, homeland security, and emergency response alongside police officers, firefighters, and emergency medical services. And whereas the public safety telecommunicator requires specialized training and skills to gather vital information and make split-second decisions to form the foundation of an effective emergency response, prevent the worsening of a situation, provide situational awareness to responders, and/or provide lifesaving direction. And whereas the public safety telecommunicator works in a uniquely stressful environment, communicating with people in great distress, harm, fear, or injury, and that environment can have an adverse emotional and physical impact, acknowledging that PTSD and vicarious trauma are real issues in the 911 profession. And whereas the public safety telecommunicator holds strong the thin gold line, providing selfless compassion care to all who seek their assistance during the good times and bad, and whereas Wilson County holds all these things to be true. And whereas the public safety telecommunicator is not recognized by the federal government as a protected classification, despite all the requirements they must meet to work in this position, the Federal Office of Management and Budget classifies this group of individuals as clerical staff, but we dissent. Wilson County could not wait for the 911 Saves Act that is stalled in Congress to give our dispatchers the classification of first responders that they have earned and deserved. And whereas Wilson County recognizes public safety telecommunicators are far from just clerical and supports the national movement to reclassify telecommunicators as first responders and truly recognize the work that they do. Additionally, Wilson County supports the 911 Saves Act to properly classify the profession of public safety telecommunicators. Now, therefore, it be resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Wilson County, Tennessee, that from this day forward, all public safety telecommunicators in Wilson County, including Wilson County 911, Wilson County Sheriff's Department dispatchers, and Wilson County Emergency Management dispatchers are hereby elevated to the status of first responders. Let it so be resolved on this 17th day of June 2024.
Vote approved.
All in favor, say aye.
All right. If any of you have anything to say, and if you don't want to speak, if you would just introduce yourself on the way out, and I'm going to give this, these are official copies for everyone. So, thank you again for all you do.
Thank you. For those that don't know me, I'm Bridget Clark. I am the Communication Supervisor and Public Information Officer for Wilson County 911. Lauren has worked tirelessly to help us get this approved, and I can't tell you how much we appreciate your help and the help of each and every Commissioner here. To have us reclassified not only helps with respect for our profession, to move it from a job to a profession, but it also allows us to hire better-trained personnel. Recruitment and retention in every industry is very difficult, and I can't speak for my partners at the JCC, for the Sheriff's Department, or for WEMA, but I can give you a few numbers just for the 911. My 911 telecommunicators had over 2,100 hours of training. That's not time working, that's training hours. Some of the things that my telecommunicators have to do, a lot of your fire personnel, your EMS, or your law enforcement don't even have to do. I make mine take, we have 10 separate FEMA classes that are necessary, NIMS, ICS, National Response Framework. We're also part of NIGMec. We have to do a whole lot of training with that. With Sheriff's Department, they do things that we don't have to do, and then especially with WEMA, they have training that we don't have to do, but somehow, we all have to make it work. And I can tell you wholeheartedly, from working with not only the JCC, but also with Mount Juliet and Lebanon, Wilson County has the best that there is to offer. Thank you all so much for our support.
Amen.
Well-deserved recognition. There is no public hearing tonight for zoning. Report for the Minutes Committee, Commissioner Fields.
Yes, the Minutes Committee met in regular session on Thursday, June 6th, in the upstairs conference room at the Wilson County Courthouse. A copy of those minutes are in your pocket. I move that they be received and filed.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Reading of the minutes?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
This time, elections and appointments. Mr. Goodall, any to be added to the list? We're good to go? Do I have a motion to approve a notary list?
Motion approved.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
11 minutes for Airport Commission. We have one member there to confirm my appointment to serve a two-year term on 11 minutes for Airport Commission. I'd like to recommend to you, Commissioner John Gentry, who's been serving there for a while now, do I hear a motion?
No.
Any discussion on that? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Health and Education Facility Board, they're appoint one member to that board to fill the vacancy created by Ms. Carolyn Stinson, who had chose to step down to the board due to a change in her employment. The term will expire on May 2026. I'd like to recommend for your consideration, Commissioner Beth Bowman.
Move approve.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Judicial Commissioners, I'll turn it over to Mr. John Gentry.
Yes, sir. Okay, the first on the list we're going to entertain is Ms. Jenny White. And this is Ms. Jenny White. She comes to us highly recommended. She's not been in the field before. She'd be a part-timer, and I make a motion, we approve her for six months. And she interviewed very, very well, and she was recommended by all those that interviewed her. And she was recommended by the committee as well. And a motion for six months.
Got a motion and a second. Now any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Jenny.
Okay, the next person would be Ms. Anita Fox. Is she here? Okay, she's back in the back there. Now, Ms. Fox has been a judicial commissioner before. She had been a correctional officer before, an account specialist, and I make a motion that we approve her as a judicial commissioner for two years. It was recommended from the committee that she be approved for two years.
Got a motion and a second. Now discussion. Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Congratulations, Ms. Fox.
Okay, the third person is Mr. Gibbons Phillips III. He cannot be here tonight because he is working. He is working. He is working, okay. Sorry about that. He's currently on the nine-one-one board. He's been a judicial commissioner before as well, and the committee recommended him to be appointed for two years. I make that motion as well.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Congratulations.
And the last thing we have is Ms. Stacy Swindell. She is currently a commissioner, and we recommended from the committee that she be elevated to deputy director, and I make a motion that she be elevated with the appropriate pay to accompany that.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, that's all I have. We appreciate all that serve in that office. It's a very difficult job. It's twenty-four hours a day, and they get a lot of heat from a lot of people.
Thank you. Report from the Emergency Management Committee, Commissioner Bernard.
DMAT met Thursday, June sixth, upstairs conference room. I move the minutes to be received and filed.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Emergency Management Directors' Report, Director Cooper.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
County Commission, as far as our dispatch report, we're at 7,338 calls so far this year. We do have two vacancies currently. Both of those will probably be filled beginning this week, so that puts us at full staff. We've been pre-planning with both the Tennessee State Wilson County Fair and the NASCAR race coming up into June. So, other than that, that concludes my report unless you have any questions for me.
Director Cooper, can you tell the commission why we have one vacancy bars? Leave my cans?
Um, he left.
Nobody scored in.
Oh.
Boy did it.
He left for pay.
Richard Scruggs has spent probably, we do, twenty-three years? Twenty-three. He's decided to retire.
Yeah.
He had kept it quiet, that's for sure. Yeah, we didn't know it.
True, 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 true.
Do I hear a motion to approve his report?
I move.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Thank you, Director Cooper. Report from Law Enforcement Committee, Commissioner Kurtz.
On June sixth, upstairs conference room, the minutes were packed, and I move they be received and filed.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Sheriff's Report, Sheriff Robert Bryan.
Thank you, Mayor. County Commissioners, your reports in your packet. Numbers are pretty much on par for summertime coming on. I believe the past few days, it's here, even though it ain't officially till Thursday, I think, but it's been pretty hot. And saying that, we've been pretty busy catching up on training. SROs catching up on training while they're at school. You see the work buses out there working. Please, please call us if you see something, so we can get to it as quick as we can before the bushhogs get it. I did want to say one thing about, you may see some of our cars out around the area, recreation areas, Laguardo, different ones like that over the summer. We're contracted through the Corvusianers for them to pay overtime, for them to be out there on weekends and major holidays. It's real important. It's cut down a lot of calls we've been getting out there, plus it's not costing us nothing. Plus, it'll benefit our patrol officers, being able to get a little overtime. We're out on major holidays, out on the waterways, in the boat, Lake Patrol. They have been stepping it up a lot more. There's a lot more people out on the water this time than the past few years, so they've been encountering some problems out there, so we're going to continue to stay out there on major holidays. Tonight, while, since I've been here, I've had three, four people come up to me and tell me about speeding complaints, people speeding here and there and everywhere, and it wasn't Diane Weathers either. But if you, we do our best to get people where they need to be, where there's a problem, but it's happening everywhere. It's hard to keep up with, so we'll continue to address it as we get them. But if you call us, let us know there's a problem, and we'll address it, okay? So just let us know. Commissioner Breeze, thank you for what you did. Dispatchers are a vital role in what we do. They're our lifeline. You can ask any patrol officer out there, they're the lifeline. And years ago, whenever dispatching, years ago, what dispatching is today, it's not just answering the phone and sending the car, it's a whole lot more, and a lot of multitasking, and they're hearing a lot of bad stuff, so well-deserved, and thank you for what you did. Congratulations, Commissioner Scruggs. I know why you retired, because Mary retired, what, two months ago? And I think y'all are going to do a little bit more camping, I believe, so that's what it was all about. But that concludes my report, unless there's any questions.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Thank you, Sheriff Bryan. Report from Education Committee, Commissioner Marlowe.
Education Committee met on May the twenty-eighth and on June the sixth in the County Commission meeting room. Minutes are in your packet. I move they be received and filed.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Director Scug's report, Mr. Jeff Luttrell.
Thank you, Mayor. You do have my report in front of you. Like always, giving enrollment update. Ended the school year up two-hundred-and-eighty-nine students from where we ended last year. Pay special attention there, the K-five enrollment. Of those two-hundred-and-eighty-nine more students, two-hundred-and-six of them are in the K-five, specifically over a hundred-and-twelve kindergartners, which means they're going to be with us longer, which will keep driving that growth number up. We are looking right now, making projections, hopefully I'll have it next month for you on what our enrollment's going to be next year. Attendance for the year, ended the year at ninety-four-point-three-four percent, all grade levels. Did include a personnel update. Mr. Lee Naishan has been selected as new Mount Jupe Middle School Assistant Principal, and he'll be, or I'm sorry, principal. He'll be replacing Dr. Engel, retired with about forty years of service, so look forward to him taking over here July one at Mount Jupe Middle. Included some congratulations, you'll see that, some scholarship recipients, won't go over all that. Summer learning is full go right now. Had over a thousand students in summer learning, that's why you're still seeing buses. We have our sites at Glavel Middle, Springdale, Stoner Creek, Southside, and Motertown Elementary, and so we do shuttle them back and forth, so you may see a little bit of change in traffic pattern, but that's what's going on with that. Construction project updates, West Wilson Middle School. Thank everyone for that came, had a great turnout, great program. As we cut the ribbon on that building, they're using that now daily. Laguardo, of course, if you've been out there, they are starting to shape up, and we will be soon looking at a Central Pike bids. We're trying to get that one now to bid. Hopefully we'll have that here in several weeks, but shortly, and look at, trying to get that one out of the ground as well. Did include some class accomplishments, just want to point out, and this will be the bulk of my report, total programs, that's including our adult high school, our virtual, all of our high schools, eighteen-hundred-and-eighty-seven graduates. Of those, thirteen-hundred-and-twenty-eight of them received Hope Scholarship money. Just to give you a refresher, that's seventy percent of our students that graduated received a Hope Scholarship or qualified. What that is, is first two years, it plays forty-five-hundred. If they're in school, the next two years, it bumps up to over fifty-five-hundred. That's the result of your school system, K-12 program. That's pretty stout numbers, seventy percent. Of those seventy percent that qualify for that, nine-hundred-and-nine, or sixty-eight percent, got that on their ACT score alone, meaning nine-hundred of those graduates received a twenty-one or better on their ACT. That's the road to qualification. The other eligibility, if they didn't get that, they had a three-point-oh higher GPA. So just want, I know you hear a lot, and there's a lot of, you know, we get a lot of attention what's going on in schools. Seventy percent of your kids graduated Wilson County are going to receive a minimum forty-five-hundred dollars a year to go to school. I'll put that and shout that on the mountaintops against anybody, anywhere, anytime. There is a pathway, due to what a lot of people in this room does, including our judges, thank y'all for being with us tonight. There's a pathway in Wilson County to receive a quality education in our public schools. It's going to be more challenging because of the numbers, we know that. But I want to publicly thank our teachers, our administrators, our board members. They deal with a lot, but when you get results like this at the end of the year, it's worth it, and we want to keep building on that. Just another number, fifty-four million dollars offered in scholarships to this group of graduates. Many of these students, their four years is paid for. We're going to start something in the fall, I'll give you dibs on it. I'm going to start an alumni spotlight that we'll share monthly at our board meeting. We've got graduates from our high schools and our adult programs that are all over the country doing some amazing things, so we're going to start reaching out and finding some of them. I've already got two or three that's agreed to come back, and we'll just do a short promo, tell them what their education meant as they went out into the world, or military, and what they're doing. So be looking for that. Hopefully we'll get that started by October, and I'll share some of that with you as long. That is my report. Any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Any questions? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Director Luttrell. Report from Public Buildings Committee, Commissioner Weathers.
Where we calling?
Ag Center Management, Commissioner Scruggs.
Ag Center Management, that came last night.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Animal Control, Commissioner Breeze.
No report.
Audit, Commissioner Glover.
No report.
Broadband access, Commissioner Franklin.
No report.
Developing tourism, Commissioner Brown.
No report.
Ethics, Commissioner Dow.
No report.
Finance, Commissioner Costley.
No report.
Health and Recreation, Commissioner Chandler.
Yes, sir. Health and Welfare met in regular session on Thursday, June the sixth, in the upstairs conference room of this courthouse. The minutes are in your packet, and I move they be received and filed.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Insurance, Commissioner McFarland.
No report.
Judicial, Commissioner Gentry.
The judicial met June the eleventh, five-thirty. The minutes are on your desk. I make a motion, they be received and filed.
Got a motion and a second. Discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Legislative Ad Hoc, Commissioner Costley.
No report.
Planning and Zoning, Commissioner Franklin.
No report.
No report. Rules, I'm sorry, Commissioner McFarland, excuse me. I looked at the wrong one. I wonder why everybody was being funny, it was because of me. Rules, Commissioner Keith.
No report.
Urban Type Facility Board, Commissioner Scruggs.
President, Captain Lord, June, Sally, and in the back, Peter, Steve.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Finance Director's Report, Mr. Aaron Mader.
I'd like to especially thank the Budget Committee for their work. We do have a budget presented to you tonight with no tax increase. Do want to say that there were lots of questions that I heard about, I guess, more than were directed to me, and I just want y'all to know, all twenty-five of you, that my door is open any time for any questions that you have about anything. The books are open to all twenty-five of you about anything that you have questions about. I do not hide anything. That is, I work for you. Part of working for you is not telling you what you want to hear, unfortunately, but I do want you to know that I will always tell you the truth, and that I'm more than happy to open any and everything that you want to know about to you. So if you have questions, please, by all means, I'm available. That concludes my report, unless you have any questions for me.
Motion approved. Second.
Commissioner Rich.
Mr. Mayor, we spoke a little bit earlier today in regards to possibility of employee raises. Our government employees, as of right now, we've got it in our, that we're going to vote tonight on a two-percent raise across the board for our governor employees, as far as getting them one step up. We had spoke a little bit earlier about what it would take in order to give an additional three percent, and this three percent that we were talking about would be just a one-time, because next year, we're hoping to get them in their proper steps. My goal is to let our employees know that we truly care about them, and we want to get them as much as we can. If we were to do this three percent tonight, additional, one-time, non-recurring, what would that cost the county out of our general fund?
It would be approximately one-point-seven million dollars, Commissioner Rich.
And that would not affect anything to do with our bond rating?
No, sir, I've got, my projections are, and we're still operating off projections, but my projections are that you would add about a million dollars to unassigned fund balance at the conclusion of this budget year. That's a projection. So that would carry your fund balance up to eight, you'd be, I'm sorry, up to twenty-eight, you'd be taking twenty-eight million, you'd be taking one-point-seven away from that, so you'd be back down around twenty-six million, which is kind of where you started in the fund balance area.
And that would get Sheriff's Department and WEMA personnel five percent?
That gets everybody except schools and elected officials. Elected officials, this body included, would not get it, but everybody that basically is on the step plan would be included.
Two percent reoccurring with the three percent only?
The three percent being a one-time bonus, as I understood our conversation.
Okay.
And again, that can be worked out, it doesn't have to be paid as a bonus, it can be paid out over the course of the year. That's how I would probably recommend we do it, to have the least impact as far as taxes are concerned.
Correct.
But yes, sir, if that was the desire of this body, that is a possibility.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Dow.
So, how can we get the teachers in there?
Great question, Commissioner Dow. I believe, and I don't, is Lisa in the room? I'm trying to remember what a one percent, what's a one percent raise for teachers?
A little over a million.
Little over a million, so you're talking about another three million dollars for teachers. So you're talking about, so you're going from, you're getting to about four-point-seven million in total that you'd be taking out of fund balance, draw your fund balance down to about twenty-three. Yep.
Commissioner Hall.
I would just like to point out that teachers are already getting a five percent raise, I'm one of them, and so I would appreciate it, no doubt, but the county employees have, they're just not getting enough right now, and we got to do something. Is there any way that we could somehow earmark future growth money next year to fund this additional three percent?
There was a resolution, we did have a resolution, Commissioner Farland points out, we did have a resolution that says if- out, we did have a resolution that says if growth exceeded 3.5%, then basically we would give a 1.5% raise. What we're talking about is, could we earmark 1.7, the first 1.7 million of growth? And I think my answer, and the county attorney is probably a better person to ask, but I think my answer is yes, you could, but nothing you do tonight would make that stick. You could say anything you wanted to tonight. You could say we're giving that money to aliens from Mars. It wouldn't matter. I would also caution you that eventually, remember, the sheriff came forward this year and asked for 10 corrections officers, which we did not give him. Eventually, I feel like he will need corrections officers, there'll be other needs that will come along. So by the time you did the step and committed this money, if you had growth money over and above that to do anything else, it wouldn't be very much.
Commissioner Franklin.
Yeah, I have just one question. Line of revenue, 44,110 interest earned. Seemed like it jumped off the charts a little bit.
Definitely has.
Twenty, is, what's driving that, and how permanent could that be?
How permanent is really the magic question. And what's driving it is just the overall change in interest rates that we've seen, where we've, the trustee has, you know, invested in CDs, and of course, we draw interest on our bank account as well. Yes, it's gone way up. We bought, to your point, Commissioner Franklin, we bought patrol cars, and we bought sheriffs, we bought sheriffs, we bought fire trucks, both, from interest earnings. I mean, I feel like it's going to last a while. I really do. I don't know, it's a little bit of a gamble, because we've also seen very low interest rate times, but I mean, that is, again, a few years ago, that number was below a million. Not just, last year, I think it jumped up to about 3 million, last year being the '23 fiscal year. I think it jumped up to about 3 million, and this year you see what it's done.
What did you estimate for next year?
I was pretty conservative. I would have to find that to remember. I apologize.
I shouldn't have known.
No, sir, not a problem. Give me one second, I'll tell you. 10, 10 million, is what I bet.
So you went from 2.5 to 10?
Yeah, I did.
So you're pretty optimistic.
I am.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Breeze.
To cut your off point about trying to do an additional 3%, I just wanted to remind everyone, and I'm sure you already know this, but we already have a resolution that the first part of our growth money, 2%, goes to county employees, which I think this year alone was a little over, well, a little under $1 million, I believe, is the number?
A little over a million, about $1 million and $60,000.
Okay. And on average, we typically get about between 2, 2.1 million in total for county growth on our audit.
The general fund portion, yes. Between, anywhere from 1.5 to 2.3 million, anywhere in that range.
Okay. So we are actually giving this point, about half of our growth money right now dedicated to county employee raises, which, you know, I think that's the right thing to do as well. I just, I don't know where the additional 1.7 would come from if we tried to do this recurring. That would be over the 2.1 we get in total.
Commissioner Gentry.
For the year, say in their paycheck? Would that be, I don't know, we can do that, but at the end of the year, then you're going to have to take it back. But if you give it to them, say in two lump sums over six months, then they would say this is a bonus, and I can't count on it, and I'm going to get a paycheck. I'm just saying, the way you give it to them, I think, makes a difference.
And I'm.
If you do it over the year, and at the end of the year, say, oh, sorry, you get that back, you know? That would hurt more, I think, than if you gave them a bonus in lump sums.
Well, I'm banking on a couple of things. I'm banking on that the overall table is going to adjust more than 3%. When you take a look at the pay table the way that it is right now, and you do a pay study based on market, the whole table is going to shift. So my original premise is that the whole table is going to shift by more than 3%. My second premise is that there are, there's a majority of this body that's interested in putting people in the step that they belong in, based on time in job. You know, so what we're looking at down the road, if we go that way, is going to be sizably above the 3% that we're talking about. But it's up to, I understand your point, and we'll pay it out however you guys choose. If you want to pay it out, because some people, right, we love tax refunds, right? We give the government a loan all year long, so they'll give it back to us, and we'll feel rich momentarily. So I mean, however, however you guys want to do it, we'll do it. If you want to pay it out in a lump sum, be glad to.
Commissioner Kurtz.
Mr. Mayor, the amount of interest that Mr. Franklin was discussing, there's a difference in 7.5 million in revenue that was budgeted last year to this year.
Oh, yeah, it's huge. Yes, sir.
And in the meeting that we had Thursday, you estimated that it was going to be around 6 million to put all the employees out on the pay plan, if we use the current pay plan. So that amount of revenue, and I'm not suggesting we do that, because I do.
No, I understand.
That this pay plan might have been set up with it. But that amount of revenue covers that amount to put the people out on the pay plan if we chose to do that.
And I would like to do two things, Commissioner Kurtz, but again, it's up to you guys, okay? So the one thing I would like to do is have a little more history than we have with the interest rates. We, this, the history that we have with the interest rates right now is pretty short. I think they're going to stay, obviously. But I would like to get another year under our belt before we start saying, let's fund employee raises with them. Because, look, when we fund something with property tax, and this is what people hate, but it's what they don't understand, okay? When you fund something with property tax, it never goes down. In 2008, when the real estate market crashed and we had reappraisal, what happened to your tax rate on reappraisal? Your tax rate went up, because it has to be revenue neutral. It has to generate the same dollars that it generated the prior year, by law, period. Now, if interest rates fall out the bottom, you're holding the bag. That's all there is, okay? So I would be derelict in my duty if I didn't mention that.
Sure. And I guess as a follow-up to that, we, people in general don't like property tax increase.
Correct.
My understanding that, right before this meeting, the Budget Committee took Resolution 24-6616 off the agenda, which was the, to discuss a vehicle tax. So we don't have any way to fund anything for the employees, again, this year. And I'm just, but that could be a possible solution of a funding source.
It could be a piece. I think it could be a piece, yes. I do. And the other thing that I would say is, you know, we are in the process, along with you and the steering committee, I don't know what the mayor has announced, but we want to study the plan that we have and the plan that we would like to have. And so I'm sorry if that was long-winded and didn't.
Oh, that was, you answered my question.
Yeah.
We did, before we go to Commissioner Glover, we did meet with Beth with the pay plan last week, and she's got her stuff together. So we will start those meetings pretty soon, in a couple of weeks, I hope. Commissioner Glover.
I am for giving a lump sum. I would prefer more like 5% one-time money. But however you do it, I want you to do it in a way that they're not going to be taxed to death on it. Because I know it's according to what, how you give it to them, whether it be a bonus, whether it be an adjustment, or however it's going to be, how it's going to be taxed, and more money's going to be taken away from them. But, so however way that you believe that they're going to have the least amount of tax taken away from whatever, whatever we decide tonight, I want you to do that.
Okay, sir.
Any other questions? Commissioner Hall.
Yeah, I just have, I've just had any more time to say about employee compensation.
It's time, as a, or as a commission, that we stop telling our employees that you're the last thing on our list before we have to raise taxes. And we got to make them a priority. And to tell them that the only way you get a raise is if we jack your taxes up, wheel tax or property tax, is unacceptable. And that's all I want to say.
Commissioner Chandler.
I agree with Blake, and I've been speaking. This till I'm blue in the face. You have 20-year deputies who make $54,000 a year. How is that possible? How do they live on that? You know, and I've seen other elected bodies throughout Tennessee, and they say different things, well, we don't have the money. Well, we don't have the money. The money's there. You choose not to allocate it to the employees. We choose, as a body, not to allocate it to the employees. And if the money isn't there, we, as a body, have to make hard decisions on how to find the revenue. We either have to make cuts or find revenue. But our employees need it so bad. They need it so, so bad. And it breaks my heart. Every time we talk about it, I look around the room, and I see the different faces people are making. And I just cringe. I just cringe. Because for some reason, with this government, we don't want to put the investment into our biggest investment, which is our employees. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? All right. All in favor, say aye. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Report from Budget Committee, Commissioner Marlowe.
Committee met May 20th, May 21st, May 22nd, May 28th, May 29th, and June the 6th. All those minutes are in your packet. I move they be received and filed.
Got a motion and second discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Resolution 24-6-2, resolution fixing the tax rate at 1.9089.
Any discussion? Seeing none, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record.
24 yes, one absolute.
Resolution passes.
Resolution 24-6-3, a resolution making appropriations for the various funds and departments.
Got a motion and second? Any discussion?
We've got some people who, we can hear a conflict.
So a conflict of interest forum, if you'd like to read those now, you're welcome to do that.
Commissioner Hall is going to read it for everyone?
Okay, Commissioner Hall.
Pursuant to TCA 5-5-102C3A, TCA 5-5-112, and TCA 12-4-101C1, I do hereby publicly acknowledge the following, because I am an employee of Wilson County Schools, I have a conflict of interest in the proposal about to be voted. However, I declare that my argument and my vote answer only to my conscience, and to my obligation to my constituents and to the citizens that this body represents.
Anyone else?
Should be seven more.
Even if we just say ditto.
You what?
I told him even if we just say ditto.
Well, I mean, if you're going to vote on the budget, you got to acknowledge it. Don't acknowledge it, you don't get to vote.
They're on the, they're hitting the thing, you're just not coming.
My bad. Commissioner Breeze?
Do you want me to read the entire statement again, or can I just say the same thing as Mr. Hall? Okay. I also have the same conflict as Mr. Hall. So.
Commissioner Clark.
I have the same conflict as Commissioner Hall and make the same declaration.
Commissioner Hobbs. Commissioner Key.
I have the same conflict of interest as I was working for the Wilson County Sheriff's Office.
Commissioner Costley.
Same as Mr. Hall.
And Commissioner Scruggs, for a few days. Anyone else? That cover all of our employees? Commissioner Jones?
Now, let me ask, all of you sign that document so we can go on the amendments. Go ahead.
Yes, sir. I had them signed, give it right back to me.
I knew you told me that. I want to hear them say it, okay? And the public needs to know that, that they followed the law, and now that, as far as I'm concerned, everybody's eligible to vote.
Commissioner Rich.
I'm making a motion to amend this budget in order to add 3% one-time, non-recurring fee to Wilson County government employees, which will put them at a 5% this year, 2% being reoccurring, and 3% non-recurring.
I have a motion and a second on the budget, and then we're doing the amendment now. And the amendment is a 3% bonus.
3% bonus to be split up into four payments.
Four payments?
Four payments throughout the year.
Would that, that'll work on what Commissioner Glover was asking? To keep them from being taxed too much?
Well, again, anytime we do a supplemental pay like that, it's going to be withheld at 22% now, I believe.
No way to avoid that then, are they? Got you. So I have a motion by Commissioner Rich to do a 3% bonus paid over four times of the year. Do I hear a second?
Second.
I got a second by Ms. Bowman. Any comments or questions to amend the budget? Will vote on many of the budget, I guess I'll have to do that by?
The head of the unit.
Okay.
Commissioner Bowman is the one that's second, and I think, correct. Yeah, that's good. Are you ready? Are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. To amend the budget for a 3% one-time bonus over four payments, vote yes if that's what you choose to do, vote no if you choose not to. Commissioner Evans? And Commissioner Breeze?
Yeah. I was just going to ask Mr. Mayor if he could give us an estimate as to how much the fund balance, whoever was. If, if any.
Discussion's supposed to stop, won't you?
Well, that's what, I was in, I was in the hopper before we started this.
Didn't, didn't see that once we started.
I pushed, I pushed the button, so I don't know what to tell you.
Sorry. Okay. All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record.
20 yes, one no, three are 10.
All right. So the budget is amended. Apologize for not seeing that. When I looked, I didn't see anything on my sheet. Do I know? She didn't see anything on hers either, and so.
It was not in the request to speak list, which I'm going to do this.
Sorry for that.
That's okay.
That's okay. So now we're ready to vote on the budget as amended. Commissioner Evans, do you have a question? I do have you in there. Excuse me?
It was previous.
Got you. Okay. Any comments or questions as we vote on the budget as amended? Seeing none in the hopper? Are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record.
24 yes.
24 yes, zero, resolution passes.
Resolution 24-6-4, resolution approving to seek membership in AARP Network.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Excuse me? Excuse me?
I'm opposed.
Okay.
I have it in the, you just want one more.
Okay. We'll let you vote. She's got it in here. If you're ready to vote, please cast your vote. If you're ready to vote, please cast your vote. Commissioner Costley? All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record.
Twenty-one yes, three no.
Resolution passes.
We'll change the order on the next three resolutions. Resolution 24-6-8. Accepting the low bid for construction of the Wilson County Court Building.
Do I hear a motion?
Make vote, move to suspend the rules.
Move to suspend the rules? Do I hear a second?
Aye.
All in favor, say aye.
All in.
Rules are suspended.
Good to vote. Request a vote.
Request a vote on, on what's on the board.
On the motion to suspend the rules.
On the motion to suspend the rules.
Request a vote.
All request a vote on, okay. Vote on suspending the rules.
Well, yeah, suspend, is that correct?
Correct. Do you want to suspend the rules and go out of session? Vote yes if you don't want to, vote no.
Can you explain to us a little bit what we're trying to do?
Yes, sir, I will. What you've got up here, we had a motion, we were fixing to vote on a resolution, and we had a motion by Commissioner Franklin, second by Commissioner Breeze to want to go out of session for some reason, so that is on the floor. And so therefore, if you want to go out of session to hear, I guess what they're going to talk about, or what they want to talk about or bring up, you vote yes. If you don't want to go out of session, you vote no. We was going to do a boss vote, and then someone said, "Let's do a roll call vote," so that's what we're doing. So if you want to go out of session, vote yes. If you want to stay in session, vote no. Please cast your vote.
I don't have an answer for that one.
I made a motion to suspend the rules.
Suspend the rules. Yes.
Four, five, eight.
Yep. That's what I've got. That's what's up there, to suspend the rules. So you're voting to suspend the rules.
Bernard.
Bernard, Commissioner Weathers.
What?
All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record.
Sixteen yes, eight no.
So rules are suspended.
No, takes two. Takes two.
Oh, it takes two. Glad I'm corrected.
Yeah, would take seventeen.
Okay. All right. So now we're back to the original motion on the floor. I don't have a motion or a second on that yet, do I?
Yes.
I do?
Yeah.
Got a motion and a second? Okay. So now I'm going to Commissioner Kurtz.
So, we're getting ready to vote on spending $84 million, and Judge Byrd, I think, said it best, and everything that she said was, our employees are special.
And I know we just talked to Mr. Maynard about our employees, and Mr. Marlowe, I promise I won't talk too much more about our employees, but undoubtedly, $84 million in a building that, that I'll say we need. I was up there last week, and we were selecting jury, and people were on the grass, people were parking everywhere, they couldn't get in the building. We, we do need a new building, but inside that building, we're going to have employees working it. And we're not voting or going to consider a wheel tax, but we are going to consider spending $84 million to build a building that has to be staffed by county employees. And I know we just took care of them, but it's going to be a reoccurring thing that we have to consider our employees and how they're paid, and we have to keep them up to pay, and, and not just surrounding areas, but above. You know, we, we need to be the leaders in the pay. I received phone calls today, I received two from patrol deputies thanking this body for taking a look at that, thanking this body, they thought the wheel tax was going to be on though. But they were thanking us for considering what we're going to do with pay, and I'm going to vote for the 84 million because we need this building. But 84, what we're going to pay to give our employees what they deserve to make pales in comparison to $84 million. And I, I agree, I think Commissioner Chandler said it best, too, with our biggest investment. And a lot of our budget, most of our budget goes to employees and taking care of our employees. And Mayor, we have done a good job taking care of our employees, and, and I agree wholeheartedly. But it, it spoke volumes tonight, you know, we, we got back two judicial commissioners, one that just recently left that office, but, but came back. One was a, an unrelated reason, but some of that had to do with the pay. And I just need, and want to reiterate that I don't think that I'm going to go away, at least for two more years, and every single meeting, I'm going to discuss employee pay. Not just the sheriff's office, not just WEMA, but every single employee that, those that are sitting in here tonight, that we need to take care of our employees, and we need to always be looking at that, and put them out on a pay plan that makes sense and is understandable. And before you hit your button for $84 million, think about what we're going to do and how we're going to take care of our employees, because like I said before, it's all one pot of money. And we, we, we can have debt service that's going to pay this payment, but we need some other pennies that are going to pay and, and be able to contribute every year to our employees. And I don't, I, I don't know if taking money away from our debt service is the answer, but by golly, we're putting it in here to build these buildings, and we're also getting ready to build another school. Right after that, we're going to be building a middle school, and on the heels of that, we need to be looking at another high school. We're going to be spending a whole lot of money. And how are we going to do that? They're not, revenue, we only have really one choice, and it's some sort of tax. And that's going to be on the horizon, and I don't want our employee pay to be tied to employee tax when we're building an $84 million building out of one pot of money. Thank you.
Commissioner Denton?
Yes, I agree with Mike, most of that. This building's not going to cost, it's going to cost us when the bonds are paid $117 million. Well, we're going to pay for this building. And we've got, it's going to cause our debt to go to our debt limit, we already been told that. So our very next project, whatever it may be, state mandated or what, with school, whatever, we don't have a choice, our debt's going up, and my understanding is, it will have to be property tax, it will not be a wheel tax if we have to raise it to build a school or something like that. So 41% of our property taxes help cover the budget, and our property owners deserve some, understand for them. I know I got all these lawyers and judges and people, so I'll probably be in jail before I get home tonight. So I just want to give my last testimony here before I leave. But we can't afford this building without a property tax coming, and it won't be the fault of what we're going to build next, it'll be the reason we're building this is what's causing the tax increase, and it will have to be a property tax. A wheel tax won't cover the kind of money we're talking about. We could have found some money to have done this with our county employees by giving all of our growth money, and we can always, we always hear say we can find a median laying around here or where, we found enough to do that. We could have done that this year as well, and then not have to build the building nor even consider a wheel tax. So, but, but, but a point of order I have is, how can we make this motion when last month we made another motion to not receive this bid? And so it makes us look like something's happened to change our minds in two weeks because this was, slick presentation was done two, two weeks ago about all the new things and why we needed it, why we had to have it. And I agree, we need it. Need's not my problem, I understand it, we just can't afford it. And without it being a burden on our citizens, and that's who we represent. And so I, I think somebody has to speak for them, but I, point of order is, there has to be a rescinding of the motion from last week for us to vote this week on this motion, because it's the same motion. I make that point of order.
Okay. Thank you. I'll turn it over to our county attorney.
All right, I'm prepared to speak to that. Am I on? I'm not, well, suits me. Let me take you back to last month, okay? And if you've got last month's minutes in front of you, resolution 24-5-12, we were voting on $84 million worth of bonds. The motion was made and seconded to approve that. Commissioner McFarland made a motion to defer for 30 days because he wanted to let Hewlett-Spencer look at the bid, and I advised against that because it opens you up to potential litigation. So he made the motion to reject the bid, and it was seconded and got quite a large vote. But the motion to approve the bonds was still on the floor. We should have withdrawn that one or voted on that one first, we didn't do it. So we made a parliamentary error there. I made a parliamentary error, error not catching it, okay? But everybody here did as well, but it's up to me to catch that, I didn't catch it. So a point of order could have been raised at that time, and it wasn't, and a motion to reconsider could have been made at that time, or before, no, it had to be made as the very next thing under our rules, and it was not made. So that one's in the history book. The resolution that you've got before you tonight doesn't say anything about rescinding what happened that night. It talks about reversing the action taken by the Wilson County Commission to reject that bid. And that's what that motion is.
It's the same thing, same purpose.
Excuse me?
Exactly, the same thing.
Well, we could, we could argue about that, and I could argue that we need to reverse something that was done improperly, but I won't, because this is what's on the floor tonight, and it's up to you to vote it up or down. But let me say also, there's another way to go at this. It's not in this resolution, but you can make a motion to amend something previously adopted, and that only requires a majority vote. So, that's my opinion.
What was previously adopted, what are you referring to?
To reject the bid. Because that's the only thing that was voted on that night in relation to the building. We never got around to voting on the bonds. We never got around to that. And before you say, what are you talking about, about amending something previously adopted? You're going to do it tonight several times, and you do it every county commission meeting. We adopt the budget in June, and then in July and August and September, we amend that budget, and that is previously adopted. That requires 13 votes, always has. So that's a way it could be done. I'm sorry we didn't catch the parliamentary error earlier. It's in the minutes that's there, you've approved the minutes, nothing can, can affect that.
Commissioner Franklin?
You know, the only problem about Mike is. You told us different in the budget meeting.
And Bobby, we and I had this discussion back there previously in the back room, you caught me as I came in the door.
No.
And I respectfully disagreed with you, and I still do.
Good thing we video our meetings. But during the meeting, you did say that it would require getting around Rule 27 and 28 in our, in our own handbook, and that's why I made the motion to suspend the rules, because I wanted to stay consistent with our, our rules. I wasn't here last month, and I apologize for that, but I'm, I'm basically asking to violate the rest of my commissioners here, because they did in fact vote on an action that we're trying to rescind, reverse the action, rescind the action. I mean, we can play word games all you want, but Rule 27 says no motion or resolution can be rescinded except by two-thirds vote of the legal membership of the commission. Okay? Rule 28 says you can't even consider it unless you do it before the next order of business, which we didn't do. So that's why I made the motion to rescind our rules, so we could do this. And it didn't pass. So I don't know where we go from here, but in my estimation, we can't vote on this without violating our rules, and that's just me.
All right. Let me, let me touch on two things there. Number one, this resolution's in the packet, and it has to go out in the packet for us to vote on it, so that's okay. If you're upset because of the motion to go out of session didn't pass, we hadn't voted on anything else, so you can make a motion to reconsider if you wish.
It did pass.
Motion to reconsider going out of session, what I'm saying, the parliamentary thing. This thing's going to get sticky. Do what, Jake?
God, loser.
Yeah, it is.
Any other questions on resolutions 24-6-8? Commissioner Gentry?
I guess I'm confused, do we need two-thirds to pass this or not?
In my opinion, you need 13.
But in the rules, it says in order to rescind something, you need two-thirds. So you're saying that doesn't apply?
No, sir. I'm saying that this resolution does not say a thing about rescinding a vote. Rescinding a vote means you totally do away with it. Reversing means you change your mind.
Commissioner Breeze?
So hypothetically, if this fails, we've been presented a bill of a total of $3.7 million, is that correct?
Something like that. Mr. Mayor, maybe you could answer that better than I can, but yes.
Okay. Because we passed a resolution in, I believe it was February of 2023, authorizing $850,000 to be spent as part of the beginnings of this process. And full disclosure, I spoke to the mayor today about this, asked some questions, and I think that there was some misunderstandings at the time. I didn't realize myself that $850,000 in the way we authorized it gave him the authority to go into contract, which I have in my hand, it's 47 pages long. But at the bottom here, it says, "The design team shall be entitled to compensation in accordance with this agreement for all services performed, whether or not the construction phase is commenced." And above that, it breaks down the different parts of the, of the contract and what was supposed to be delivered, there's five of them. And my understanding from my conversation with the mayor today was that 80% of those documents had been completed and given to us, at which point we owe $3.7 million in total, so 2.9 approximately, 2.8 is basically where we are right now. Now, I spoke to Mayor Jennings this evening, or County Attorney Jennings, and asked him about this clause that I just read you, as I said, in this contract, to see if we were still really on the hook for this money if this bid fails, or, you know, where this contract leaves us. So I'm going to defer to him to answer as he answered me this evening.
If we sign the contract to pay this money, we owe the money.
Okay. So this was really important information for me to learn in the last, say, 96 hours? So I wanted to make sure that everybody in this body understands that because we are so far in this process, that if this fails, we need to go back probably to our general fund and authorize payment of approximately $2.8 million for the rest of this contract.
We authorized 850,000, that's what we authorized. I'm going to sign the contract, that's what we authorized.
So I signed the contract, and so when we take it to the committee like we have throughout the history of the county, we bring it to you and tell you that we got a project that's a need, if you want to do it or not, we tell you if we have the money, according to the estimates is there. And then we, then you give me permission, as you did with this one here, to enter into that. They get the 850,000 upfront, which was 500 and something thousand from the opioid money, 300,000 from our capital projects fund, and we enter into that agreement with Katsun Binkley in this case. But then we don't pay them all their money upfront, because we want them to be there for the duration of the project for the two years, so we pay them a little bit along to keep them with us as well. So that is why the project, that's why the billing comes over the top. But the plans that they did, which is, you think, you may want to say that's just architectural, but that's mechanical, electrical, plumbing, fire marshal. but that's mechanical, electrical, plumbing, fire marshal, all those people that review those plans. They do their job upfront so we can put it out to bid. That's, that's, that's always discussed. I mean, that, that is the cost, the 5% cost of doing the design.
I don't think that it's clear to this body, like I said to you today.
Yeah.
Now again, I mean, this was passed through, I believe, public buildings, correct? In February of 2023.
So that is, when we talk about the contract to do the drawings, that's what the cost is. Now, giving you the total cost of that, I think what that goes back to is at that particular time, we had an estimate of 78 million for the building. So 5.5% of that is what that cost would have been. But they go back and actually charge you on exactly what it makes. And if you know, this one came in at 64 until we added the alternates, which pushed it to 84, but it was under budget at the time. But that's, that is the same thing when you face one here in just a few days or a few weeks with schools. Director Luttrell will bring you a, saying that they're going to pay for the design. But that's why we always do that upfront. We don't bring you a project unless we have the money to afford it. Now, if the bid come back in at 150 million, then you definitely would say, hey, look, we don't want to do that. I didn't come back anywhere close to what we got, and then cut your losses for that 2.3 million is pretty easy. But that is a cost that we have, and that's, that's a cost that you'll have if you decide when we do the work sessions and change gears. They won't, nobody will draw and design a building without you paying for it. Commissioner Hall. I'll just go on by what I had on here.
I'll go ahead if you, if you don't mind.
Oh, Commissioner Franklin?
Yeah, I don't remember any of this either. And I guess my question is, if the mayor is, can obligate the taxpayers without our vote, why did we do the 850,000? Why did we even waste our time?
Well, when you entered into that agreement in the very beginning, and when we came to all three committees and we have, where they passed at, that's what you were agreeing to. That's what we've agreed to every, every time that we've done this. We've never had the discussions. And I'll, I can bake the heat. That's not a big deal. But every project that we've done, Commissioner Franklin, that's the way, that's, that's why we bring it to the committees. As a matter of fact, we brought them to all three committees, judicial, law enforcement, and public buildings. We didn't talk about 2.3 because it was larger than that because of the cost of 5.5% of getting it designed. Yeah, I mean, it, it's, you paid eight, you paid 800 and something upfront to get them started, but it's 5%. I mean, it's, it's like on every project we've ever had, schools, jails, WEMA stations, they're all the same. Nothing's changed.
Well, if I signed a contract and the commission didn't vote to authorize me to do it, I mean, I, I don't know. It just doesn't sound right to me. I mean, but in the future, what, what do we need to do to, to fix that? Because I think it's certainly an issue now on this, because it really is. I mean, if, if we really are, if the taxpayers really are obligated to this amount of money that we didn't authorize by vote, then I kind of feel like one of my arms is tied behind my back here on the vote. I mean, I don't know how the rest of my fellow commissioners feel like, but I guess I just got to close one eye when I hit this button.
That is the way, Commissioner Franklin, that, that is the way that we have done all of them. I definitely will spell out. Now, again, I can only spell out what the estimate is, and I know Jason's in the back. We estimated according to the square footage cost of at that time with 180,000 square feet, what we thought it was going to bring. But, so we won't know the exact dollar. We won't know that until the bids come back. But, but this is, this is nothing new. We've done every project that we've ever done through here. It's never been a question before until tonight with the, the questions on this building. I mean, that's kind of pretty evident. Yeah. Commissioner Denton.
It's time it is because this policy in practice, the night we voted, I was here. I voted against it. I think most everybody else voted for it. But I think everybody here voted for the same thing that I heard that night was we was approving $850,000 for the architect to take care of those architectural documents for us. We didn't approve any building. That, in fact, there's been nothing but an assumed approval of this building in, in any of our commission meetings. There's been no approval of that building. And so if someone had the authority to go and spend 2.4, 2.3 million dollars without our, without us being able to have one say about it, and when we thought we was voting on $850,000, we need to challenge, that, that's something that needs to be questioned.
Commissioner Breeze.
Follow up on my, my comments that I wasn't clear on this either. So when we voted in February of 2023, the only thing I knew about was the $850,000. Now again, I asked a lot of questions this last week. How I ended up in this contract, which is why I read through and discovered where we were. I know that the mayor did a presentation at the budget meeting on the 6th. And one of the pieces that he presented in the budget meeting was, I think there was even a picture in the PowerPoint presentation of the invoice that we had been served of, I think it was 2.8 or 2.9 million dollars, which was shocking to me because I didn't know this either. But the contract itself on page 19 says, "The design team shall be compensated a partial design fee of $850,000 for all work required to prepare documents for submittal to authorities having jurisdiction for review purposes and subsequent bidding of the project. When the project is fully funded for construction by the Wilson County Commission, the total fee due to the design team shall be adjusted to reflect actual compensation based on 5.5% of construction costs plus 5.5% of any unaccepted additive alternatives." Which does sound like if we move forward, then we pay this. However, at the bottom of this page, it goes on to say in section 11.6.1, "The architect, or the design team shall be entitled to compensation in accordance with this agreement for all services performed, whether or not the construction phase is commenced." And as I said, it goes over and says there's five documents. They've produced four. One moment.
I signed the contract.
Yeah, the, the contract was signed by the mayor. I believe it's a form template. Hold on, let me find page one. Sorry, as I said, 47 pages. I'm sorry. I apologize. Where'd it go? Looking for the front page. I apologize. It's.
I believe it is a standard A1A architectural contract that architects use, and it's, it's pretty lengthy.
Yeah, it says AIA document B101-2017. So it's just a standardized agreement.
Right. So we had called for the question by Commissioner Marlowe, but I got four in the hopper, so we'll start with Commissioner Hall.
Questions on, on this document, it says, "When the project is fully funded for construction, the total fee due, the design team shall be adjusted to reflect actual compensation based on 5%, 5.5% of construction cost." And then it says, "Plus 5.5% of any unaccepted additive alternates." So I guess my question on that part is, is that talking about the three alternates that were presented to us?
I think it's 5% of the total cost, whatever the construction cost is. That's why we took out the furniture and the IT, and the IT part so they don't get a 5% of that because those are separate, separate bids.
But, but it says unaccepted additive alternates, which my assumption is that means that fourth floor plus the 30% build out plus the parking lot. And so we're going to pay them 5 and 1/2% of that whether we do it or not.
Only if you accept a bid.
Right. If we, if we accept the bid, but we cut that out, we're still paying a commission on something that didn't happen.
I don't think so. Yes, we are? Yes. Yeah, because we asked them to draw it up. Yes.
Okay. That just seems counterintuitive to me as a taxpayer to pay for something we didn't do.
Well, no, they did the work. They did the work at our request.
No, the work wouldn't be done if we say we're not doing alternate one, alternate two, alternate three. That we're saying we don't want that. If we said we didn't want that done and it doesn't get done, we still owe them money. A commission, 5 and 1/2% of those particular costs, even though they didn't get, even though they didn't happen. Is, is, am I understanding that correctly?
Yeah, I'm going to ask Mr. Morris to come and speak. He can come to the back podium if you will.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. The, the 5.5% on the unaccepted alternates, the would be owed. The alternates were put in place to design a building that would provide the needs to meet the judges for now. But then the alternates were designed in to meet the needs for the future. There was no way to get prices on those alternates without designing those alternates. So we broke out the, we broke out two extra alternates. One of them was to do, to build a shell of the fourth floor. And that was, then the second one was to actually design a new courtroom for that fourth floor. So for the contractors to be able to price it, to get what we needed from the judges, what, what they wanted to have in that fourth floor, we had to design it so that our work was done doing that. We could have just brought it to you with, with no alternates and just done one base bid and had included the, the fourth floor shell and the fourth floor build out of part of it as the base bid. But we wanted to give options in case the, the money was not there. And so therefore, it would reduce the cost of the project. So that's why the alternates were done.
And then I think maybe also to answer your question, so if the, if the alternates are not accepted and we go back to the 64 million, then the 5.5% comes from the 64 million, not from the 84 million, correct?
The 5.5% would come from the, the base bid plus all of the cost of the alternates.
Even if we, but if we don't, if we don't accept them?
If you don't accept the alternates, we've still designed it, and we've still put the, the, the alternates out to bid. And so we've done our portion of the work.
But it's not the construction cost?
That's correct. You would, you would not be spending the eight, nine million dollars on those two alternates.
Yeah, just the design fee.
Correct, yes, sir.
Yes.
Know that, but kind of on the spot right now. I'm just kind of estimating this out. I believe I'm right on that.
Probably.
Okay, thank you. I didn't have a calculator pulled up. If, if one of my additional jobs that I do, I sell real estate. And I do a lot of work on a lot of deals. And sometimes those deals don't happen, or sometimes the price of the deal, because a real estate agent's commission is based on the price, which is very similar to this architect's fee as far as it's based on the price of the, of the build out. So one of the things that I do as a real estate agent is if, if, if the price goes down, my, my commission doesn't stay at what the original agreed upon price would have been. And also if the, of course, I know if the, if the, if the building completely doesn't even get built, then I'm assuming we don't owe a 5 and 1/2% of that. But it just seems counterintuitive as somebody that's kind of in a similar field to pay somebody for, for something that isn't part of the deal, to compensate them and give them a commission. I know this is part of the contract. And, but that just seems like we're really putting the taxpayer on the hook for something that shouldn't be on there. But I know it's part of the contract at this point. But my second question, and it kind of echoes Commissioner Franklin's question is, how, how is it that we're signing contracts that are obligating the county to money? And I know this, you've said that this has been done. That's the way it's been done. But how, how are we obligating money for the county without the approval of this board that we have to do on any other thing that we do? I mean, we cannot pay somebody something without this board voting on it. And the only thing we voted on was $850,000. And so that's my question. I don't know if that's a question for the attorney or just a rhetorical, but that's what I would have to, like to ask.
I think it's, and I can answer the best I can because that's been kind of the conversation that we've all had. And, and I'd be glad for you to turn that on me. That, I don't have no problem with that. But that is the way that we have done business here. I do not, and again, I've said this many times, I do not bring a project to you unless we can afford it. But when I bring it to you and say, here's a chance to build that, then, and you say, let's go forward. And again, my bad for not saying exactly what the cost would be. I don't go back and remember exactly what that was. But, but when we talk about going in or getting into that project, then that's, that's what the committee meetings are for. I can't get you a bid without drawing it. Drawing the bid for this type of building is definitely costing more than 800 and something thousand. And I should not take that for granted that you know that, but that is the route that we've always gone. Going forward, we'll be definitely glad to tell you every thing, every dime that I can come up with towards that. But that's, that's the process. If you tell me when we brought it to you the first time to the three committees, hey, we don't have an interest in doing that, then we would have never started down the road. But when you tell me that, then that's what I do every day is try to get it to where, we can get it to where you want it. At that time, and I think those of you that maybe can help me a little bit in here, I don't have too many friends probably right now, but that when we started through this process, it was, let's go, let's go, let's go. Let's get the fourth floor. Let's get 30% build out. Let's build a parking garage. We couldn't build it big enough. And so you were telling me to go. So I, I work for you every day. Sorry I didn't tell you, Commissioner McFarland, that you know exactly what that cost was. But the history that I inherited here and all the projects that I gave you in that material, that's the way it's been done every time. This is no gotcha. I didn't, I didn't, I wasn't, no plan of gotcha. If you'd have told me to quit from day one, we'd have quit. And that's what we, that's, that's how we've done business. So apologize for not giving that number. Realize I'm on the enemy side tonight. But, or maybe I'm just a punching bag because we don't want to do it to begin with. But at the end of the day, the needs here, those people that fussed at me for six years about getting something done, we've done everything else, and they've waited for time to do it. And so that's why I brought it to you. But if you don't want to do it, just vote no, and I'll save 84 million and we'll go back to work and do something different. But I, I hate the cost of that, but I can't ask him to draw it to get you a price and not pay. Sorry I didn't tell you what it cost all of that. That is my bad and public record tonight, and I'll take it, I'll take it on the chin. Sorry for doing that. But it was in honest that I was headed down that road to do what I thought you wanted me to do. Commissioner Kurtz. No, don't do that.
The realtors don't have as good as legislature help down there with bargaining power and how the architects do because I'm somewhat familiar with the, these contracts. I'm going to stop short of saying they're contract of adhesion. But I've gotten my hands slapped before from taking that contract from an architect and drawing some lines through it and trying to change things. And correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Jennings, that pretty much we get these contracts from the, I don't know if they're A1A or AIA contracts, and we take them where we leave them. We don't have a choice. We can't bargain them. We can't do any adjustments in those.
Well, I've done some of that in the past as well. I got 35 years of these contracts, so probably more than anybody here. And the contract has always been the same. Have, when we saw the need sometimes to modify, we have. But this was a pretty standard contract, and I have to agree with the mayor. Every committee this was taken in front of was full speed ahead. Nobody said, hey, wait a minute, what are we doing here? So.
And they, and this contract in particular, it isn't anything different than what we did when we designed our schools or we designed anything else, and that was funded. So it was never an issue. It's only an issue because. an issue. It's only an issue because we're talking about funding it, and I, and you know, Mr. Franklin, maybe you're right. Maybe we need to not give the mayor permission to sign the contract to begin with, and that needs to come back, and page by page, we can go through a contract. I'm not on that committee.
Got you.
I'd rather give mayor the permission and move forward, because when Mr. Morris does the work, we're going to have to pay him for it.
Commissioner, I'll go to Commissioner Chandler. I will say that I was looking for a farm the other day, Commissioner Hall, and my Realtor was trying to get me to sign an exclusive right with her, and she said, if you don't sign that, I ain't working for you. And she said, if I signed it, I couldn't work with nobody else. And so, I guess they are stricken up those rules there. Commissioner Chandler?
Little differently, because I do have experience with building a very expensive building and working with architects, but all the work we've done so far just guided us to the bidding of the project, correct?
As far as the price that we paid?
The 84 million.
Yes, sir. We got.
And that's what this project says, is we pay 850,000 to the architect to get us to the bidding of the project.
No, that was his upfront money, so we wouldn't duck and run on him after he got started. So, he'd get a little bit of money from us?
For review purposes and subsequent bidding of the project. And then it has another section about when the project is fully funded for construction. That's what we're trying to do today. Then we owe more to the architect. And in my process, we didn't do construction documents, which is the bulk of their work, until we knew our elected body was actually going to fund the project.
So, the breakdown that I got when I asked the question, schematic design is 15% of that cost, design development is 20%, construction documents are 40%.
We shouldn't be at construction yet.
And procurement phase is five, and then construction phase is 20%. So, they charged me the 20% over the long haul. Mr. Morris, would you, I want to recognize you again. Could you explain this part as well?
So, the, 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 the project is broken up in, on the AIA document, the phases of the project are defined as the schematic design phase, the design development phase, the construction document phase, the procurement phase, and the construction phase. In the schematic design phase, we put together a small set of plans, worked together with the users, and then continue to add items to those documents. In other counties, with other clients, we'll take the full design fee. We'll say, this is what it's going to be, and when we get done with the schematic phase, we invoice 15%. And then we move into the design development phase. This county, we've done it differently to where we did, this is what we're going to design the building for upfront, and then when we get done with it, then we'll take the rest of the money and break it out over the life of the project to help out on the upfront costs. The four phases are to get it to the bidding phase. That's the procurement phase. The construction phase, we go through, we work with the contractor, work with the users, and we're on the job site once or twice a week. We review documents that come in from the contractor, make sure that what the contractor is providing is what we've designed. We make sure that the work that they're doing is what we've designed. So, that's, that's what the construction phase is. We act as a, I don't want to say a manager, but an overseer of the construction project at that phase.
So, on a project, can you bid it just off the schematic design and design development phase?
To get an, you cannot. The documents at that schematic phase are not, you could put a price on it, and you could have what's called a pricing set, but then to get down to that exact dollar amount that the contract, in a hard bid process, that that contractor is going to pay, you have to get fully through a full set of construction documents. Those construction documents have the details, the type of GIP boards you're going to use, the type of concrete you're going to use, the strength of that concrete, the sizes of the steel members. In the schematic phase or the design development phase, I can have an idea what size steel you're going to use, and the contractor could put an estimate together based on that. But in the hard bid process, you have to get to that construction document phase to get the full set of plans together for that contractor to bid off of.
And what could have been the difference is we went contractor at risk versus the hard bid process. So, that might be where we're a little different here, but I think probably to fix this in the future is we need to have it coming back in front of the commission before you get to construction documents and start spending the large portion of the money. You have your research phase. You have maybe an idea of a range that this building is going to cost. It comes back in front of the commission to say, okay, let's spend more money to do the construction documents. But all this said, I've looked at this. I've looked at the, the price and cost per square foot, and I think we're really getting a deal for the need that we have. I really do. You look at all the other buildings that have been built around this area recently and the cost per square foot, and if you just look at comparing courthouses with, with large open spaces, large courtrooms versus, you know, if you compare those buildings, I think we're getting a good deal in Wilson County for what we're trying to do. I'm afraid if we back off of this, costs are only going to get higher, and we're going to end up spending more money down the road because we know it's a need. And I would like a judge to speak, because I honestly don't know the answer to this question, but what are the consequences in the court process if that court process becomes ineffective? I guess the question I'm asking is, do people not get their cases heard? Does it lead to offenders maybe being released earlier than they should or not being seen as fast as they should to bring justice to the community and to the victims? Does it mean violent offenders stay on our streets longer if they've already bonded out?
Commissioner. You know, I think it's similar to what we did with COVID. We shut everything down. No trial. We didn't have any trials, you know, two different occasions during that 24, 30-month period. But sure, there's a problem. If folks are out on the street, if we delay the trial of the cause, then it's going to be lengthening out. So, I think if I told you otherwise, I'd be, I'd be misleading you. So, that's certainly, certainly a real possibility. I'm not asking the commissioner to, the commission to do it based on what somebody might do in the future, but realistically, yes. I think from the criminal side, that is certainly kind of a natural byproduct if it would get to that point. Yes, sir.
Basically, it extends the criminal justice process.
Absolutely, it does. It took us probably two years to get out from under the COVID backlog, and we're finally getting there, but.
The statement that Mr. Cherry made about our county dealing with more violent crime, is that accurate?
Absolutely.
All right. Folks, we have to, we have to keep this county safe, and we talk about law enforcement on the streets, doing their job, but it, the criminal justice process is more than just your police officers. It's a court process, and I don't know how we adequately reverse everything that's been done. And I think we need to focus forward on moving this process that has been going on for six years, and we move forward with it, because the next, the next person that's going to come in is not going to be cheaper. There is no way, because they are listening to how strapped we are. You know, so I think we need to move forward, Mayor.
Last comment from Commissioner Costley.
I about forgot what I was going to say. Lord have mercy. Well, my daughter's an attorney, so I can see her need. We argued about this the other day. I told her I thought it was too high. But we're already on the hook for 3.9 million dollars. If we turn this down and start over again, we're looking at another 3 million. Is that right? Or what was it? 3 million, rounded up. Somewhere between two and four. So, we're looking at spending that again somewhere down the road, correct?
That's what you want to do. Yeah.
That's, that's really all I had to say. So, we're kind of at a bind here.
I will go back to Commissioner Franklin's comment about interest rates, and then we'll call for, the question's been called for, so we'll vote. We got, we did get an email today. I did not request this from Ashley McAnulty, and it said, I can't, as you considered this, just understand that if your interest rate goes up 1%, it's an extra 10 million to you on this project. So, which I thought was, you know, we don't know what it's going to do, but with the election coming, we don't know. We have had the question called for. All the comments are done. We are ready to vote on 24-6-8 to accept in the lowest bid for construction on the Wilson County Court Building with the contingency that they will work with the government to lower as much cost as possible. If you want to vote for that, vote yes. If you don't, vote no. Cast your vote. Commissioner Weathers? All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record.
18 yes, 6 no, 1 absent.
Resolution passes. We move forward.
Resolution 24-6-7 is a resolution authorizing the issuance of general obligation bonds not to exceed 84 million dollars.
Do I hear a motion? Motion in the second. Any other discussion?
You're on number seven, Curry.
We are on number seven.
On number six.
Seven.
They did seven first because the, no sense of putting it on public notice until you do that?
The initial resol-
Yeah. Funded.
We've already done enough damage to parliamentary proceeding, but the initial resolution has to go out first, and then if people want to challenge that by referendum, you'll see under the notice part there, that goes out first, and they run that in the paper. And then the other thing is the actual spending. But according to Ashley McAnulty and the Bond Council, we do vote on these on the same night, which I find a little unusual, but they get paid the big money. So, I'll go with them.
So, am I okay to go with 24-6-7? I got a motion with Commissioner Jones. I got a second by Commissioner Chandler. Discussion. Are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record.
21 yes, 3 no, 1 absent.
Resolution passes. Move forward.
Resolution 24-6-6 is one, it sounds the same, but it's the one dealing with public notice, authorizing the issuance of 84 million dollars of general obligation bonds for the purpose of construction renovation and improvements of court facilities.
Got a motion in the second. Discussion. CNN, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record.
21 yes, 3 no, 1 absent.
Resolution passes.
Resolution 24-6-9 to amend the budget to make an appropriation from general fund to sheriff's department.
Discussion. CNN, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. Commissioner, all hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record.
24 and 1.
24 and 1. Resolution passes.
Resolution 24-6-10 to amend the budget to make an appropriation from the general fund to sheriff's department.
Any discussion? CNN, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record.
24 and 1.
24 and 1. Resolution passes.
Resolution 24-611 to amend the budget to transfer WEMA Homeland Security Grant Funds.
Any discussion? CNN, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. Commissioner Weathers? Commissioner Weathers? All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record.
24 and 1.
24 and 1. Resolution passes.
Resolution 24-612 to reflect revenue received and to amend the budget to make an additional appropriation into WEMA.
Any discussion? CNN, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. Mr. Clark? All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record.
24 and 1.
24 and 1. Resolution passes.
Resolution 24-613 approving a lease agreement for county clerk.
Discussion. CNN, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. All hearts and minds good? Please record.
23 yes, 1 no, 1 absent.
Resolution passes.
Resolution 24-614 to approve and accept Tennessee Certified Recovery Court Program governmental grant.
Any discussion? CNN, all in favor, say aye. I'm sorry, that's wrong. Can't do that, can it?
No, you got to vote on that one.
Yep, my bad. All right, no discussion. Are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. That was money. All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record.
23 yes, 1 no. 1 absent.
Got you. Resolution passes.
Resolution 24-615 to amend the budget by approving the Wilson County Board of Education Amendment 14, no, excuse me, 2413.
Any discussion? CNN, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. Commissioner Jones? All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record.
24 and 1.
24 and 1. Resolution passes.
Resolution 24-6-17 to amend the budget.
That will have to be, you will need the rule suspended for that one.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed?
Okay. Resolution to amend the budget to make an appropriation from general fund to various line items.
Got a motion in the second. Any discussion? CNN, all in favor, say aye. I can do that, can't I? On that one or not?
We're going to vote on this one.
Got to vote on that one? Money?
It's money.
Are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. Mr. Clark? All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record.
24 and 1.
24 and 1. Resolution 24, do you have a motion to go back into session? All in favor, say aye. Resolution 24-6-16, the Budget Committee met tonight on the wheel tax and pulled that one until further discussion with the County Commission. Before I go to old business, I would like to say this. I pride myself in working for you. Every day, I enjoy coming to work and trying to do what I think is right. My goal was not to mislead you or cost you 2.3 million or ever how many million it is. I did what I have always done. I'm, and I hope you know that, because I'm disappointed tonight that maybe I'm not as clear as I should be. I sent those emails out trying to get as much information as I could and got a little ridicule for that, for putting out too much information, but again, I do my best. But I'm here to serve you. Sorry I let you down on that. That won't happen again. I can promise you that. You'll be sick of hearing from me. So, but I, I do, I will say this. We will have workshops on construction manager at risk, guaranteed maximum price, construction manager. We're going to bring everybody back together and let them talk to you about different ways of doing business. That will happen. Also, the pay plan- Also, the pay plan, we'll also have work sessions as well, starting up soon, so you can address that issue with Beth and build your structure, however you want to build, whatever you want to build. And then as we enter towards next budget season, we will look for ways to fund whatever you choose you want to fund. Otherwise, I apologize for letting you down. Any old business coming for the body? Any new business?
Mr. Jones?
Yes, sir.
Was that a statement I want to pause because I was...
That was both.
I was going to make the motion that you had another $2.5 million vote, I took it out of your saddle.
Appreciate it. Thank you. And, and I'll bring your computer in next month so you'll have it ready to go. I need one more motion. I know you won't. We are adjourned.